County Commission Meeting for September sixteenth, Commissioner Peady, would you leave us some prayer?
Pray, Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together tonight and do the business of the county and the community. Give us the patience and insight to do what's best for all the above. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Everyone start with the pledge.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
May I call Robles?
Mr. Simkins.
Here.
Mr. Ledger.
Here.
Mr. McElwain.
Here.
Mr. Beatty.
Here.
Mr. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Spicer. Mr. Buckner.
Here.
Mr. Brett.
Here.
Mr. Peady.
Here.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Grove.
Here.
Ms. Greg.
Do have a quarrel. Mr. Williams told me he had a little business. He couldn't be here tonight, so we'll look forward to seeing him next week or two weeks. First order of business is approval of the minutes of the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular session. Motion by Commissioner Peady, second by Commissioner Gray. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Next item of business is public comments. Did any public sign up for comments?
Yes.
No public comments, let the record show. Next item of business committee reports. Any committees for? Thank you. Next item of business appointments. We have two different appointment sets on here. The first is regional solid waste board. The names that are on there that were up for reappointment, like to be reappointed, has Mary Littleton, Mr. Jeff Martin, and Mr. Ken Nath. We'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Butler, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Second appointment items, Library Board Trustees, there's a vacancy on that board. Former County Executive Linda Frazier has agreed to serve on that. I'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Peady, second by Commissioner Simkins. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number five, resolutions, quarterly financial reports, all school funds, Board of Education representative. We don't have a Board of Education representative here tonight. Did y'all have any questions? Are you ready to move these forward, or do you want to delay it till next month? It'll be the will of the commission. Motion by Commissioner Simkins to approve, second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Next item is quarterly financial reports. Mr. Hall.
Mayor, I don't have anything to add to the fourth quarter ending June thirtieth for the fiscal year end, June thirtieth, twenty-four. It's just all the funds we discussed two weeks ago, all the funds were in good shape.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? We'll open the floor for a motion. Do you have a question, Mr. Beatty?
You sent us some landfill stuff today, a little, is that later in the list?
Well, it can be, if we've got amendments that will, that are reflections of that list, so you can ask it.
I had a question, I guess, I don't know, by directness toward the mayor or what, but there was a rebuild on a nine sixty-three loader.
Yes.
And I just was wondering how come, that's an awful, I'm kind of into some of that business of that loader stuff, but are we not looking at maybe buying, and I didn't understand, why are we not buying a new one, a new one cost of three hundred, and we're spending two, I mean, I'd rather have a new one for three hundred than a rebuilt one for two eighty, I was just wondering our thought process.
The quotes that we received on that were assessed at five hundred thousand dollars, that's why the
That's why we
That was a rebuild on that, and that came from Mr. Lunn and his staff.
Could we rebid those?
Well, yeah, we can.
My thought is
Now, we didn't have, we didn't bid it out, we did receive quotes, like the mayor just said, so it hasn't been
My John Deere guy was with me this afternoon when I got that, and I just asked him. And I, I mean, I've got it, I can email it to you.
Sure.
You know, I mean, they were two ninety-six and three ninety-seven. And I'll show them to
I don't have a problem.
And I don't know if John Deere didn't get the bid on that.
I can answer in detail.
Before we did that, I would just like to look at that a little bit, let me
Be glad to do that.
Ask him, did he get quotes from whom?
No.
We can do that. Well, it's actually going to be on the next item on amendments, so whenever we do that, if you're, if the commission's fine with the rest of the list, we can approve that and we'll hold that item off.
Well, let me inject right here, this is what we're going to have amendments on is Fund One Sixteen. What you're looking at there is in Fund One Seventy-One, so that's talking
Wait.
No, we don't have to wait, I don't suppose.
I'm like the mayor, though, everything else is fine, I would just like to hold that one.
Yeah, that's in One Seventy-One Fund, and we're fixing to have amendments on One Sixteen, landfill fund.
Okay.
That's going to be item number three, so we go up to One Sixteen. So right now, we're still in a quarter of the reports on that, so is any questions on the quarter of reports? We'll entertain a motion then to approve those. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Now, budget amendments, so we have that. And if I'll take that as a motion to approve with and withhold that, do we have a second to that? Thank you, Commissioner McElwain. Any discussion on any of the other items?
Who do, I mean, to landfill, is that the only piece of equipment?
I think it was only a large piece of equipment. I think they had, there's a list there that was sent out, and Mr. Hall has that about.
They're doing the transfer station floor, that's included in this, these amendments for the
Some compactors and stuff, but that's the only
Compactors that are not anything like a dollar amount he's talking about. But again, we're talking about amendments here for One Sixteen on the landfill. But that other is in One Seventy-One, but that's something that's coming about pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah, but that was only sizable piece of equipment, Commissioner.
Mayor, who, who, who controls the, I mean, do they not go through the process of bidding out, or who, who's in charge of that? I mean, are you, or, I mean, to make sure that's done right?
Oh, well, anything that requires over twenty-five thousand dollars requires a bid as far as on the purchase. Again, on the four in particular, on the equipment, yeah.
Well, Don just got here saying he didn't bid it, they didn't bid it out, is that right?
Well, we were repairing an old piece of equipment, so there was nothing to bid out. The question was, we got out, and I didn't use the term correctly, bid, we got quotes for a new one, is what it was, so
And it was a half a million dollars?
Yes.
That's caterpillar?
Yes.
Is that
I believe so.
Yeah, nine sixty-three, I got one up on a million, let me sell it.
So we, I've got your number, Commissioner Dawson.
Good gracious.
So they probably did put it on bids, you just looked on government state contract, bid contract, right? So who had to state bid it?
We can buy certain items that are statewide contract
Right.
Without bidding it out, but that doesn't mean it's always the best price there either.
Right.
Six feet, this is John Deere.
But yeah, this is a repair item, so what they've done is they've quoted how much it's going to cost, but the thing is, we were told it's going to cost five hundred thousand dollars for a new one, which I know nothing about that type thing, but I'm just going on what Mr. Lunn and his assistant that know all about that stuff, I don't know what the cost, the cost of it is, but that was, we was trying to save some money there, so.
Be glad to hold it though.
Let's send you these.
Please do, we can save some bucks and we'll sure look at it. All right, so on this, with, after that portion of discussion, there's no other questions, we do have a motion, and it was to approve this minus the quote or the bid or the repair work, so
Okay, so we'll hold off, any repairs on that loader, nine sixty-three loader, but the amendments as presented are being approved, that's got the raise, isn't it? Five thousand dollars for the fifty cent raise for part-time, and the, okay.
There's everything else in there.
How essential is the loader, I mean, something I gotta have today?
Excuse me?
How essential is the loader, is it something that they're going to have to have before next month, or?
I, I think we'll be fine on that, there's other equipment that they can get to, but it is essential, you, even if you take it down for a month till you got to get back to using it. And again, I don't know all the exact details on it, but it's something where you're going to have to get that one repaired to get something new, because it's something required out there.
And Mayor, also in this amendments, we have general fund with forty-five thousand for fifty cents for part-time is included, so the general fund raises and what we just discussed for landfill, minus the loader right now.
Bowl up, dough.
We got it.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, that sounds ludicrous, I mean
They're massive, but if they're, those are, they're huge.
To repair. That's all I have to add. Yeah.
With that, we do have a proper motion second, there's no discussion, all in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number four is a men's school education capital fund, one seventy-seven, Mr. Hall.
Okay, I handed you out a sheet tonight, this is where we failed to get the appropriation resolution to include the fifteen million dollars for the capital outlay for the education department, this here solves that problem for them.
Any questions for Mr. Hall? Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Beatty, second by Commissioner Spicer. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number five, capital outlay notes reimbursement agreement, Mr. Hall.
Yeah, this is the capital outlay notes reimbursement agreements for landfill and highway department. Just getting approval from you guys to go ahead and take care of those items and get, they'll be three-year notes.
Open the floor for a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Brett, thank you, Commissioner Ledger. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number six, errors and double assessments, this, thank you, Mr. Hall, I'm sorry, we've already done with you. Item number six is errors and double assessments, this is what Ms. Penegras brought to you last week. She's not here tonight, so I hope you don't have any questions, but if you do, if you don't have any questions, I'll entertain a motion. Thank Commissioner McElwain, Commissioner Beatty. There's no questions. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. The tax relief program that she explained two weeks ago, what we do every year, open the floor for a motion on that, Commissioner Spicer. Thank Commissioner Buckner. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number eight, the good news is, we can pull that, because in two thousand twenty-three the speed limit was set for thirty-five miles an hour from one end of Hogan Road to the other. Mr. Reagan. It didn't say speed limited, it's just speed suggestion, so whatever y'all decide after that, that's good, so. Next item is part-time employee raises, you already voted on that through the budget amendment, Mr. Hall, but we need to vote specifically that. That's a fifty cent an hour raise for all of our part-time employees, and open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Peady, second by Commissioner Dawson. Any questions or discussion? All right. With Mr. Simkins abstaining, all in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Item number ten and eleven have become one amendment, this was brought to you last month with the public hearing and the first reading of this. It's an amendment to Article five point oh four one, A one agricultural district C, uses permitted as a special exception by adding number twenty-one, commercial dog breeding. And number eleven, that's also part of this resolution, amend Article two, section two point oh two oh, definitions by adding commercial dog breeding. Mr. Darnell's here, Ms. Graves the advocate for this, so I'm sure they'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any. If not, we'll open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner Gray. Second by Commissioner Beatty. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank, yes. After that long discussion, he is correct on item number three, we, I thought I had a motion of Commissioner Beatty. On that, item number three, where we did decide to spend the money, but held back the loader, I have Commissioner Beatty and McElwain, yes. I actually wrote that down too, so, thank you. All right, good. Item number six, we're even being Roman numerals, the LGIP account deposits, that was the notification that Ms. Penegras gave y'all last month, that she just has to notify you what was done with that. Also, that's been added to your desk on other businesses, it doesn't require vote notification, you've been given a report of all the fees collected by county officials. Ms. Greer brought this to our attention, we need to do this, it's just for presentation, we put it in the record, you have been presented these. So just for your review, and feel free to reach out to any department head on any questions on, any elected official that has that. Any other other business? Next is approval of notaries.
Y'all, they're not in here, but you all got my email, I'm not required to read them every time, I just do, but somehow, they're not in my file. I, I messed up. You've got them with you? Thank you. I don't have them in mine, I don't know what I've done. Probably flipped them to somebody.
No, you took the trouble to get up, I want you to go through with it.
I'll clip somewhere, I don't want, I'm sorry, y'all. Okay, here we go. Johnny Wayne Christian, Ken Emerson, Carrie Elazier, T. Gorham, Anne Cathy Grisim, Belinda Hammack, Amanda Christine Hight, Navia Simone Johnson, Linda King, Kim Krantz, Joe Musselman, Lisa Nesbit, Brittany Thaxton, and Danielle Tucker.
Thank you. Open the floor for a motion. Motion by Commissioner McElwain, second by Commissioner Spicer. All in favor of vote was stating aye, opposed, thank you. Got a couple announcements, we have some folks here from the Boy Scouts that are working on their, their badge that, that gets you that, about community stuff. If y'all don't mind, the whole, and your leaders, would y'all stand and just introduce yourselves to everyone? Thank y'all for being here, we appreciate it. Another announcement, Commissioner Another announcement, Commissioner Ledger's wife, he's self-reported. He has a birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday to you, Commissioner Ledger. And for those, you may not be here. If you don't self-report your birthday, we sing to you and it's not very good. So he saved his ears for another year. So hope you have a happy birthday tomorrow. Any other announcement for a final announcement? Commissioner Gray?
What is going on with the farmer's market in Dixon? There's been dirt moving around. I don't know if you're just paving it now or if we're actually doing
Yeah, the construction started on that. It is the paving process. We budgeted in the budget five hundred thousand dollars. The dirt work and the paving and preparing that's going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's done. We're working now to find a suitable covering to put over it. We have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left that we're trying to, that, that's not a lot of money, but we're going to try to get what we can do. But the, the goal is, is to come February, is to have the farmer's market there one way or the other, because it's just really become an issue having them at the ambulance service. So hopefully come February first, you can go there to buy your, well, I guess in February, you're not going to buy a lot, but you can buy something, some greens or something maybe. So, but yeah, it's going ahead, hopefully full speed. They're on sixty days to do that. That clock started two weeks ago, so they should be finishing up somewhere in early November. Thank you.
Or is it just us?
It's just us.
Okay. I just wanted
Sometimes things work better that way. No, they're fine partners. They've been very helpful. Any other question? Any other questions? Okay. Well, the final announcement is the next regular session meeting will be on Monday, October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four at seven PM in the Beaufortale Booty Reed Junior County Commission Chamber of the Dixon County Administration Building, a Four Court Square, Charlotte, Tennessee. They have a motion second adjourned. Sure.
This weekend is Charlotte Festival.
Yes.
Parade and they always have to do here on the square. So they'll begin Saturday morning. Parade, as usual, lines up out on the H. Ed Road. A lot of our Google fans and everybody's pulling our church and pick up and go along. Weather permitting and well, it will rain, but weather forecast was
If anybody wants to ride in the parade, we'll, we'll, we'll find, find something for you to ride on. We did put a trailer one time, but we did put rolling wheels on there for the people sitting on it. So it was a little bit of a sport as well as a parade, so we can do that again. Thank you for that announcement. Thanks everyone for being here tonight.